So it is 7:00 P.M. And not only does the Board of Selectmen have a quorum, but we are actually still in session from our earlier meeting. So if Dr. Dow would like to meet you guys, then we'll get rolling.
Then come. You ready?
Ready.
All right. We're good.
That's the way you do it, huh?
(laughing).
You have a lawyer on your board.
It's that easy.
You never dabble, I mean.
I've got to dabble. Dabble out as much as you want.
I said my piece out.
So Kelly, who's the right person to tell us what we're talking about?
Um, well, I don't know. We have Kelly. I can slow down.
Chipping on our four docs. Approval of the, well, that's the motion. We're discussing the financial policy guidelines as drafted and distributed earlier this week, dated December 18, 2018. This represents the work of, actually, it's going on two years now. Couple of years ago, we, just as a quick, for those of you who aren't aware, couple of years ago, we got the grant from the Clennell of Massachusetts as part of the Financial Management Best Case, I'm sorry, it was the Community Compact Program. One of our grants, it was for $35,000, that helped to establish and coordinate, compile financial policies for the town of Topsfield. We essentially did a massive inventory of all the existing policies that were in existence, internal, external, including any that were in place by the Finance Committee. We worked with a member from the Collins Center to basically assemble some of the best practices that were available, in that we worked with them as consultants for, I think it was a good six months to eight months, that me, the Financial Management Team members had met, walked through that process, helped assemble the guide, and then we introduced a draft format to a small, there was probably a couple of meetings of the Financial Advisory Group. And so what you have here, though, is essentially, it's sort of the development of a document that's been since personalized and customized to be specific to Topsfield and our structure. So we have best practices across the state, however, we wanted to find a way to take these best practices and be able to adapt them and customize them to either ways that we would like to or would strive to target, or really just put in writing what we were already doing all along, it just hadn't been formalized and written down on paper and approved. So what you have before you really is a culmination of a lot of different work from many different folks, both from the Financial Management Team I worked with, the Town Accountant, with our Treasurer Collector, worked with members of your board, John Eppoint, John, you were someone I consulted with, and Karen as well, and then Mark Lyons, as representing the board, but also as a former Chair of the Finance Committee, also participated in our policy process. And we've refined those, the Finance Committee has met in multiple meetings to discuss them, to deliberate upon them. In particular, there were three policies that were sort of taken out of this document to be focused on. One was our reserve policies, and the other was our OPEB policy, and then, of course, a capital planning and debt management policy. All of those were specifically looked at in more detail and depth during the course of the FinCon meetings. And so as a result of those meetings and their feedback, I assembled those changes and made revisions to the document you have before you. What this represents to me isn't the law, it isn't a document that can ever be changed, it merely represents a roadmap by which we had under one cover all of the best practices that have been sort of recommended to us. They are not inflexible, we can change these. By me, I mean what I have sort of considered or visualized, is that the FinCon would be sort of the working bodies, working with the Financial Management Team. We will be looking at these on a regular basis, usually right before the budget process, or presumably, and probably even more appropriate, might be when we're not in the midst of the budget process, right? So it becomes a part of an ongoing toolbox, if you will, that we would like to use to help us create the roadmap and to be able to look to these guidelines, and it's still an evolving process. So as we, before we get into the budget process, when people say, "Well, how do you put, why do you put so much money into free cash?" Or, "Why should we put money into OPEB?" All of those decisions are yours to make as public bodies, so we've got the FinCon, but we also have the Board of Selectmen as the chief executive, and then the FinCon as the financial budget advisors, and of course, bringing motions to the floor at town meeting. So this really represents a really comprehensive document that we want to be able to use as, to help us with our framework and to further refine and develop a lot of the things that we're already doing. We know that we just recently, about a year ago, got an upgrade in our financial for our standard of course rating, and we also know that we stand a very good chance, before we go up to bond again, of having them analyze these policies and for us to be able to say that these have been formally adopted by the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, I believe will go a very long way in showing that we are committed to formalizing these policies and using them as a reference and a guideline well beyond the budget process. So what we have here, and for you to discuss, is, you know, what this means, I think we've delved a lot into that, but I feel like I'm close to the finish line, but I don't want to jinx myself because there's a lot of information here. So I would just like to open it up to both of the bodies to talk about these, maybe ask some questions that still need to be answered, but my hope is that we can get these formalized and adopted well before we have to go to S&amp;P and ask for our next borrowing issuance.
Let me ask a process question if I may.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the last time we talked about this, which wasn't long ago, what I thought was that there were three key policies, and those were the ones that you and the FinCon were going to make absolutely short of what we've done. And then we were going to identify which of the other ones maybe were pretty, just a matter of, you know, didn't really take care of. So, okay, but now I'm hearing something different, so that's why I'm a little, but what I think is, but this is all the policies.
This is everything.
Very good. Okay, so what happens as we last talked, I mean, did you just get more done than you thought?
Yes, because a lot of them were things that weren't necessarily policymaking decisions.
Yep, that's what I'm just saying.
There's a lot of procedure in here that was really just being codified, if you will, so there's a lot of things in here for financial reporting, that's done by the Town Accountant's office, the Treasurer's office, there are policies in there that have to do with personnel and position control, we are already doing that. So we really, those three policies that we took out were really the meat and potatoes of the policy process.
Okay, but, and I just feel like, I just need to get it firm, is one of the real questions.
Yeah.
But, so, but we've done an adequate, at least an adequate review of all the policies.
Yeah.
Not just because it's the end of the year, where we've done what we need to do for everyone to be comfortable with.
Can I, can I make it from it?
Sure. Well, you gotta ask Kevin. Seriously, let's just talk more than that.
Well, of course.
The last time we talked about this, you indicated to us that you needed to spend time with the Finance Committee to get their input on what we were talking about at that time, and there's, like Mark said, this has become a lot more extensive document than we're talking about there.
Mm-hmm.
Now, I'm gonna ask the Finance Committee, had that happened? Did she spend time with you guys to get your input here?
Outside the big three?
Yeah.
I think, I mean, John and I looked at them a year ago.
Yeah, I'd say, I'd say, for the big three, extensive, extensive.
The big three.
Yeah.
The other ones, I think everybody's had, everybody's reviewed, and most of it is kind of outside our sauce, it's just me.
Well, a lot of it's procedure, like, yeah.
It's procedure, and when you read it, it's...
If you guys are happy with what's here for the big three, your input is important.
If I can add my perspective on it, when I read it, and I read the whole thing multiple times, and we participated in multiple meetings, the sections, the three sections we really reviewed were the ones that were really important to us. And to my thinking, the other sections which we reviewed, nothing's glaring, to me, are sections that are useful, but this is guidelines, and we can change them if we need to, and I think having a completed review is incredibly valuable as we go forward.
But I'm gonna jump in, because that's the critical point to me, that I didn't, I agree, but didn't want to sacrifice quality for talent.
Yeah.
So that's what we're trying to do, is just go through it.
There's one little other detail, which is, it's unclear to us, at least, like, who is really, who ratifies this, right? So our inputs in it, so that procedure on who ratifies, how often is it reviewed, how often is it updated, right? You know, so it's not a, it's a pretty good start compared to the form doc that we started with, and it's quite tailored, and it sounds like S&amp;P would much prefer a full document than just the three sections. And when you look at the rest of the document, I don't think there's a lot that you're like, "Wow, right now, that's just a huge issue that we couldn't, six months or a year down the road, make some edits and change it." Who the "we" is the one that procedure and the process is a little unclear, we just have to figure that out, but...
I mean, some of the pieces, you know, like, will follow the state purchasing rules. Yeah, okay. I mean, it's...
I'm trying to get to whether there's a category, you know, just using my district. I'm pushing back a little, only because this is the point that I've been focusing on for the last month, and I can certainly be of no doubt about that. As much as I respect what standard course needs and when they need it, they don't want us to fail to do our job for, because of that, I'd rather. If you guys, if you guys said we'd need three more months to really do it right, I'd, you know, so I'm hearing that you're comfortable with it.
I would say that, and I'm only speaking for me, and everybody else can speak for themselves. The other thing that I'd say is, is being a principle of a regulated entity, we have our own supervisory procedures, which we update like every year, and so a part of it is like a document that then you then, when you live with, you realize where it's a little off, and I think the stuff that, the stuff that our future changes are going to be things that we haven't lived through, looking at it, is how I'd answer it.
That's, that's helpful.
Like, for example, the various reports that are listed in the document, we have parts of it, and we've done some of it, and, you know, when, in my entity, if I say I'm gonna do something, and a regulator's come, we haven't done it, we're fined and penalized. Here, it's a little more of like, well, this is what we're saying we're gonna do, and yeah, ultimately, things have to go through town meetings. So if there are reports or processes that are cumbersome, or we don't have the capacity to, or something like that, would be the only thing that I would say, this might need to be tweaked down the road, but it all seems to be, say, for...
Yeah, I mean, we didn't ever vote on the big three, we came up with the consensus with the meeting, and we likewise didn't vote on the non-big three, and we really haven't discussed them in any detail because, well, it's a lot of procedural things that...
Karen and I, in the beginning, each supplied comments on the rest of that stuff that all got incorporated, but earlier, and then everybody's reviewed documents, so it's...
We can go through it, section by section.
No, I don't either.
One thing I would, and John brings up that I just, there's six or seven different reports that are listed in this, that are great, it's awesome, I'm excited for, I'm curious, it's more of a comment, when Standard Course comes and looks at this, are they, they're gonna, the potential is there for them to ask, really towards you, say, "Oh, oh, can I see your capital improvement plan?" You know, if I was an auditor or something like that, I would come in and ask to see one improvement, so having them in this document, I think we just need to make sure that it would be more dangerous if we had them in and it didn't happen, than if it wasn't in there.
Yeah, so I think that's...
Better off having it written.
Yeah, they always forget the exact wording of this, that's, we still in your own protect...
So I think, I mean, there is, I counted, I counted six of them, unique reports that were specialized, you know, once, a couple of them, you know, there was a...
Some we have.
Yeah, five-year financial forecast, capital improvement plan, grant list, annual audit, a comprehensive annual financial report and cash flow forecast for the annual ones, so...
A bunch of monthly stuff, too.
Yeah, and then, yeah.
That's why, that's the one I thought was gonna be, you know, a real case, there's some monthly stuff that has to happen.
But I think that's normal operations.
If that's normal operations, that's great, or if in my house, it'd be disaster.
I do.
And the annual FinCon letter to the town, which goes in the warrant, and, okay, maybe we need to explain a little more in some areas than we have in the past, but pretty much, the letter...
It holds together.
Yeah.
So making sure we have those other...
I mean, that's what it gets to what I've been saying all along, is, I was pleasantly surprised that a lot of these policies were already doing them. We just never put them in writing and put them under one document so that we could say, "This is what we agreed to, this is why we do what we do." And, and so it's really, there wasn't a lot in here that we said, "Oh, my Lord, this is gonna cause a lot of work for Catherine because she's not doing that already." She is doing it, and to some extent, this process allowed us to sort of share with all of you that when we're making the sausage, you don't know about all the stuff that's going on, but...
It gives town the visibility of everything that's happening that they don't see when they see the warrant and they just show up to town meeting, and they don't come to every single meeting, or they don't go, you know, chat with these folks on what they're doing on a day-to-day basis, that's a big part of it.
You're not just chilling, popping Bonbons.
No.
Are we, are we, Catherine? We're just sitting by the fire, just personally, just nice.
That was one of the same questions I had, what do we need to change in order to get to this point where this is kind of the objective, the, what we're trying to attain? So I know we're probably not there on the percentages, the dollar amounts, the 3.53.
We are.
We are.
Almost, almost.
We're close to 3.
Close to, I mean... Sort of, we spent three nights doing, arguing about half a percentage point.
We looked at the historical levels, both on the dollar basis and then the flip percentage basis, so the document wouldn't be starting at a point in time. And we saw the high watermarks, the low watermarks, you can sort of see like stabilization to get to a level, and then you gotta take it down, and then how do you ratchet it back up, and when do you say, "Oh, it's kind of at a pretty good level," and that was a lot of the discussions.
We spent a lot of time on the language around those objectives, so that we're not putting a target out there, saying, "We must, we will."
Yeah, like, for example, if you take the stabilization, if something bad happened, all of a sudden it goes down low, if it was written that every year it has to be at that level, then you would have this liability, you wouldn't even have the dollars to do it, right? So we're sort of saying, you know, over several years, over a certain period of time, with a certain minimum to get there.
We strive to get it adopted.
Well, I was looking at the other pieces, you said the reports in the same way, we might not have them all ready at this point in time, I know some of those are on your goals for this year, so it's a work in progress.
So there's one number that's to change, the OPEB number, 300,000 instead of the conventional 100,000, so that, that is a constraint.
It'll be an ongoing debate, because...
Right, but it's in the policy.
It's in the policy.
If you're charging yourself to do freedom, you have flexible according to the, that assumption.
Well, just there, you'll strive to, it says...
And last, and last bit, we're right, we did do 300,000.
You did do 300,000.
So if, if Standard Course goes back and looks, they're going to see, or remember, that last year, we did put 300,000 in, but what is in there is a commitment to continue to try and fund it that way.
Continue to, yeah, willing to...
That's right.
Yeah, but... And that concept, again, was, we're behind, and you can't continue to fall more behind, you either have to tread water or make progress, right? But the actuary assumptions every year change, so it's, it's a little...
And this steps us a little ahead of...
Well, last year...
Doesn't hurt to fall behind. This is a trick.
So, here's some crazy things.
Yeah.
The simple act of writing it into this and accepting it takes our liability down by over a million dollars.
Really?
Just by writing it in, because you're looking at a 40, because you're looking at a 40-year pay, or a buyout, and you, and it drops the discount rate by, you know, 50 basis points, 25, I'm not sure what it is, but by doing that, it drops your liability amount by a million dollars. So, so, you know, because of what, you know, if you think about, what they're doing is they're predicting the future, so they're doing something like this where they've got a graph that looks like this, and they bounce it back and forth in between, and so if we can narrow this side down, then it brings the whole thing.
So in other words, by saying this, we're reducing an outside person's worry that we're gonna stay too far behind, therefore, that top line of how bad it could get, right?
Trying to count that, yeah.
It's constantly changing.
Yeah.
No, I realize that these change, and it's, the accounting rules have made it change this year even more drastically than times ago. I appreciate that explanation.
I was just gonna say something, one of the reasons we got to this point, I mean, I thought for sure there was gonna be some changes to the OPEB policy, because I thought when we would go back, maybe there'll be more of a discussion, there was nothing. I think because we were looking at these policies and we knew we had to get an OPEB policy, Barbara and Catherine and I said, "Why don't we..." We had just gotten the actuarial study in, and, and so we just said, "Well, why don't we..." And we've been talking about this with Jay and everyone, you know, "Why don't we have Parker just come in and talk to everybody and explain and answer the questions from him?" And so just being able to explore, and I had asked him, you know, "Do you have any suggestions for policies?" So the fact that we were forming this policy document, and we knew that that was one of our goals, actually helped to push the process forward by having him come in, have a meeting, Mark got to attend, and talking about that policy, and being able to leave that room and understand why it's so important, and the fact is, what he said was, "Listen, I'll work on some scenarios, I will show you that you will get your money, you'll, you'll get at least a million dollars back if you do nothing else but write down that in 2035, when your pension obligation is paid off, you're gonna take that same amount of money and you're gonna add it to OPEB. Just writing that in this document is going to help you through the eyes of S&amp;P." And so that was one thing that we're committing to 17 years from now, but that was something we never would have known had we not researched it and said, "Why is OPEB important?" Because when I talk about OPEB, some people just roll their eyes, and yet now, it was just like, "Oh, 300,000," when I looked, I said, "Oh, it's not even 200, it's 300." So it was, it was a really good process for me personally to see sort of the transformation and the understanding, just by having that person come in and explain what it means, why it's important, so that when you're asked that same question on town meeting floor, we've, we've got people around the room who can answer that.
We should actually highlight this, every guideline is a percentage of budget, except that one's a dollar amount, because we know what that liability is and the actuary stuff, so just people realize, like, why that's not a percentage of our budget, yeah.
Minor point, under OPEB funding strategies, ABC actuarially determined contribution, actuarially, if you can say it, only has one L.
It has name.
Thank you.
What page, what page, 14, 14?
14, 14 at the top.
Oh, and I showed Parker, I showed Parker our policy, and he said, "I just had one tweak." So instead of an ARC, just so you know, now with G74 and 75, they don't talk about ARC anymore, it's...
And there's a...
So actuarially has one L, you're wrong.
And there's a publicly inherited.
You know what? To circle them.
I'd like to say a couple more things, two things about this document that I'm excited about. First of all, as Kelly said earlier, all of these ideas have bounced around town for 20 years, all right? Never been put down on a piece of paper. This becomes kind of a handbook for somebody that, some outsider, that wants to see how we're trying to run our business, they can say, "Holy cow, you know, these guys look like they've spent the time thinking about it, these guys know what they're doing, and that's pretty impressive." The other important thing is that we have to make sure that there's flexibility, like you said earlier, and we gotta make sure that there's an easy way to change it. When somebody comes up with an idea that isn't working and we can't do that, we need to figure out a procedure for doing that. And this is a joint document, in my opinion, so, you know, Finance Committee and Board of Selectmen are gonna have to agree on that change.
Should we put in just a piece of text that says, "Changes adjusted..."
That's what I was...
Review on an annual basis to be approved by both FinCon and Board of Selectmen.
Yeah, we brought that up, and we wanted to bring that up here, but it should talk about how it gets updated.
I'd say periodically, or...
And it talks, I think it talks, Kelly, about regular reviews and changes...
Yeah, it should be, right, yeah, these policies should be reviewed periodically by the time.
Well, monthly is too often.
Yeah, periodically, because...
Periodically, semi-annually, or semi-annually, or something.
It's on, it's on page of what?
What it doesn't say, what it doesn't say, though, is...
What's the mechanism?
It says appropriate public bodies, but...
We need to, we need...
I think you need to zero in on that, because these are the two groups that are gonna do it, and, and we might not all be here someday, so this becomes the guideline for the new people.
So are we a body, or are we two bodies?
We're two bodies.
We're two bodies.
We're two bodies.
So this is the point that confused me, that you can't have two people in charge, right? I think somebody has to have the authority, and I don't see how you do it with two people having that authority. So if we say no, and you say yes, it can't get done, or if you say no, and we say yes, it can't get done, is that what we're suggesting, that it needs votes?
A majority in a joint meeting?
Well, as you guys have mentioned, there are a number of things in here that are not related to FinCon.
Right. I think you're an advisory body, and you're the CEO.
I, I, again, I don't wanna throw water on this, but I really liked the way whoever drafted this drafted the sentence we just read, and I think, I think it's beyond, it's somewhere beyond this room to do what we're talking about right now. It goes to statute in some cases, and I also, I think most people from, dedicated to our independent FinCon structure, and I, for the bottom of my heart, don't want to do anything inadvertently to take that away. I think you would have to, you know, form a committee, or somebody that spent probably longer on figuring out who had authority on each one of these than it took to put the document together. You can't just supersede law and different things.
Well, that last sentence of the first paragraph, what you're talking about.
I think it's beautiful, I think you're, you know...
Could you read that sentence again?
"These policy guidelines should be reviewed periodically by the town administrator and designated staff on an annual basis and updated as necessary with the appropriate public body."
Yeah, the appropriate public, I mean, I don't think we're gonna be challenged in how we mandate all of that tonight, because basically we'll just...
So the question is...
I think if you go down to the procedure, and the procedure in my vision is that the procedure is that as CFO and manager of the Financial Management Team reporting to the Board of Selectmen, that one of my responsibilities in my job description is to make sure that these types of documents are established and maintained.
I think...
But then I would refer that.
We have it covered in this room.
I think so.
But if we go to the point of which is yours, which is yours, which is ours, I would...
That would be difficult. I just, I just envisioned that I would perhaps go to both, or maybe the FinCon, same thing we did for this, go to FinCon, we recommended changes, get your feedback, and then go to the board.
If there's a difference of opinion on a specific article, right, or research, maybe, maybe our account has statutory authority over it, or a treasurer, or a, you know...
Should we just, in that case, change it to bodies, then? Because if you're saying that we're gonna review this together, it's two bodies.
My thinking is if the responsibility to review falls on the town administrator, then the town administrator is hired by the Board of Selectmen, so my sense is that it probably falls on the Board of Selectmen based upon this. That also says appropriate bodies, body or bodies, obviously counsel, support, and advice will be necessary if policy is appreciated, so...
Sure, you can do one of those little parentheses things that you...
Yeah, body, IES, so it's...
IES.
Yeah, body with an IES and friends next to it.
Yeah, that's right.
Because then, because depending on what happens unforeseen between now and the future.
That's a valid...
I also think, this, what you were saying before about this, I guess, be helpful, is I think every year when we're making those recommendations in the last five Warren articles about what moves to what, people understand the framework that we're thinking through, they're not just like, "How do they come up with that number?" Because we've always had the discussion around it, they just not many people get there.
The other thing is new FinCon members, new selectmen, new people in town hall, well, the reference document...
This is an excellent, excellent piece.
So the comment, I didn't want to go down that rabbit hole, I was not headed in that direction, but I was looking at it from a much broader perspective of, we're sitting here tonight, and how does this get adopted?
Yeah.
Who has the authority to adopt this?
I think it's the combination of the two, I'm not, I'm not troubled by that, because I'm gonna make a wild guess, you're gonna take the vote, or we're gonna take the vote.
Two separate votes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And yet, again, the conglomerate certainly has the authority, you know.
The question is if there's a dispute, one is a dispute, what's it on, and that's...
And how do you resolve it?
And so we could, we could write a 300-page document to pontificate that at large point.
So the answer to the question I'm asking does not matter, because both parties will likely adopt it.
Process for joint document.
So you can't, the argument that the wrong party... The argument that the wrong party did it or.
You're talking about a conflict, unforeseen conflict down the road, how do you solve it, that's the.
No, I was just thinking if, if, if we're gonna take separate votes and each votes can be a vote to approve, why worry about that?
I'd, I'd just like to make sure when we have different boards of selectmen and different finance committee, and it's important that the finance committee has input to this document, okay, that, that has to be certain.
And there is one spot in there where it says, in consultation with the finance committee. So there is some distribution of that, and I just can't remember which section it was in.
That's the point I'm making, consultation and the board can say, thank you for your opinion. So that's, your, your point is not being resolved here at all in the future.
Well, not yet, yeah, but we can, we can get there, we, we can change it, Steve.
I just wanna add that the elected body is the Board of Selectmen. And it ultimately goes to the town, appointed by the moderator is the finance committee, so ultimately, the responsibility is gonna be the Board of Selectmen's policy in the town.
Unless it requires town meeting approval, in which case we can't get it without going to the district committee.
Have you heard what's, have you heard what's happening in Rockport?
No, is it a volunteer or are they?
Rockport, the Board of Selectmen appoint the finance committee. And there is a dispute over the school budget, and the Board of Selectmen has asked finance committee people to resign.
Yeah, we do some things right in this town.
But ultimately, you are the elected board from the town, you know. As much as I appreciate the fact that you're gonna ask the finance committee for input, but if there is a disputed part of this policy, I think the Board of Selectmen will ultimately have to take ownership.
I, I would like to think that we can come to some.
Absolutely.
Understanding, that there won't be things that are just so violently differing.
Plus you guys are paid to do it.
I just signed a document, they said I'd give the dollar back.
You got a hundred bucks here.
We don't even get the dollar.
In, in all seriousness, first of all, thirty seconds, is someone taking good notes on the minor revisions that I think we didn't agree on? Like the spelling, spelling revision, spelling revision, but.
I'm doing the editing.
Somewhat plural on the.
Or just encourage a spell check, run them down.
Yeah, it'll, it'll do it, I'll bet.
And in section one, general budget. The first, the first line, the one in the A or backwards.
What do you mean by, we don't, we do it in typos, I don't know what you mean by minor.
No, 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 you wanna do the typos or do you wanna do the philosophy?
Everything is one dollar.
If you have something that you think needs to be changed. We just did them, I'm trying to finalize the. Yeah, well, let's do it. Digger, enough, and I am only half of this situation, if anybody has any, whether it's a minor or anything, now's the time, we're getting, I hope, towards voting on the document.
On page two, under references, it has a tough field bylaw, and then it simply says Article ten, Town Administrator. It's, it's actually chapter two administration, if you use the same format that some of the other references do, but it's necessary because there are certainly a number of Article tens throughout all of our bylaws. So it's, it should be chapter two administration, comma, and then that. And under the administrator, if you just do the article instead of the section, the article itself is Town Administrator's powers and duties. This is a tough way to do this, I think it'd be much easier if we could just, for example, take a document like this and pass it around for people to go through and something, look at it, couldn't it? No, I mean with the changes, you can see them so much easier. And that same page, under policy, next down, policy guidelines, fourth line down, it talks about the proposed budget for all town agencies, I think we want that to be departments.
Page two.
What's that?
Page two.
That was page two, right?
It's the, it's the policy guideline.
Yeah, under one dash B.
Departments, right?
Keep going, please.
At, at the very top of page three, add in there also, chapter two administration, comma.
Oh, at the one C?
Oh, reference.
After tough seal bylaw, at the very, very top, tough seal bylaws, add in, chapter two, two, administration, comma. Because otherwise, Article four, there's a number of articles.
I have Dick, yours is forehead, so it shows on the top of page three. Some of you, it's page bottom of three. And maybe you slap the space or.
Okay, what's the change in?
Dick, can you read that again, the bullets where it should be tough seal bylaws, Article four.
Chapter two.
Chapter two, Article four.
You got it? Okay.
No, I just have one question.
What page is, uh, the, uh, page, uh, three, under page three, the fourth paragraph, third paragraph down, last line, kinda ends with, and three, estimate impact on taxpayers and ratepayers. I, I can see why it was ratepayers, because the previous item is only ratepayers, but the overall discussion is both. So that's why I think it needs to have both there.
I know, wait, I, I found it, I just. And taxpayers and ratepayers.
Uh, the next paragraph, um, near the bottom, it has December thirty first. I don't understand that next one, it's like, it's like a double jeopardy or something, because it's specifying December thirty first and then and a different time. It seems to me that you probably wanna strike that and the remainder of that, I, I don't know, unless somebody can explain why it's there twice.
How about we strive to share by December thirty first and we'll share it no later than?
Oh, that's what I was trying to say, oh, that's what I was trying to say, then that's great, okay, yeah.
It's an ambitious goal and then, but, but no later than.
Strive to, excellent, thank you. I just have a favor on that same page, uh, under one D positions, it starts background. After, on the second line down, it reads personnel budget can lead to, and I would put a colon in there because if it, if it says lead to errors in budgeting.
Errors in over, understaffing errors.
Yeah, see, lead to errors, lead to over, lead to incorrect, got it? Got it? Okay, one sec. Then, you got it? Then on the top of what I have on page three. Under policy guideline.
Yep.
We need a screen to put this up on.
It'll be okay.
Yeah, third line down at the beginning of.
Now it's, this is gonna be on the bottom, it's going for any of us.
Okay. You, you have it, where is it?
It's, it's.
Is that the bottom of three?
It's at the bottom of three.
Bottom of three, bottom of three, third line down, it has near the end of the third line, town. I would say that it would read better to say that the town intends to have in the year of that budget. It's really not, when you talk about the annual budget, just, just try to read it the way I said it. Annual budgets will be prepared in such a way that they account for all the costs necessary to cover positions in the town, that the town intends to have in the year of that budget. In other words, in, in the, in the year of the annual budget you're cutting, you're making, it's the, you intend to have this many person, this, this many people, and that's what you're trying to match.
The budget's really kind of, for the next year, but you're in the current fiscal year, so you're seeing a mismatch?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it makes sense, what you're saying, yeah, what you're saying makes sense.
How about, has budgeted for that current fiscal year?
But it's not that, so what there's, what we're saying here and the fact is, is as we plan next year's budget, we have, this is saying you have to take in consideration this year. What it should say is you have to take in consideration next year.
What you intend to have as the, I think that's what you're really trying to do, and the budget, the budget is going to match the intended minimum position.
Just put in the word concurrent. Just put in the word concurrent.
Which you.
Fiscal year.
Yeah, yeah, I got it, what you're saying, how you word it.
Concurrent fiscal year, so just change current for one word.
During the next.
Subsequent?
Concurrent fiscal year. If you're concurrent, we have to have it.
Let me think this through because I think I dropped her this little bit.
Current and following.
Annual budgets shall be prepared, okay, that's what we're doing now, that account for all the costs necessary to cover positions that the town has budgeted during the current fiscal year. Okay, what I meant by this was, when I'm working on my budget for next year, I'm working on a budget based on this year's numbers. Why? Because I've segregated out any proposals that I may have for next year so that we can discuss that as part of the budget process and the approval process for next year's budget. So maybe you're saying the same thing that I'm thinking.
I guess, cause you then, your following line says, okay, what in effect you're saying is, annual budgets will be prepared, start with this year.
Yes.
Then you go, proposed changes should be identified during the review process.
Right.
And those changes might be decreases as well as.
Increases or whatever.
And it goes on to say, proposed increases must be analyzed to ensure the personnel costs and employee benefits, including pension and insurance, can be fully calculated during the budget planning process. So that says what I, what I meant to say, but if it's not coming across like I'm writing.
You could say the then part is clear, that makes it more clear.
The then part is clear.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, that's a nice one.
Current fiscal year, okay.
How many unions do we have? Isn't it six unions, you got the police? Oh, it is six unions, you're great, okay, then we have to fix that on.
Wait, wait a minute, I changed this because we had two, the absentee units were consolidated into one.
That's what I thought.
But then we also have a new one with the school committee, under the school committee, there's two with that.
There's two in the school committee, so we're seven then.
Which is what you have.
Then the seven is right, seven is right, I didn't know the school had the two. The school has two, correct, is that what you're saying?
Two at the school, yes, they have pairs now.
I believe.
So we got the absentee, one absentee.
Higher professional.
We got police, absentee.
Two, two police, two fire, and, uh, the public, uh, work.
Yeah, two.
It's five, plus two for the.
Seven total.
Two for the school, I didn't know the two for the school, then it's correct, that's correct.
Move on.
Try that, might comment on that, that's something that every year we have to change.
Below that, below that is policy guidelines.
You put a little word current.
You're gonna update this every year.
Hopefully, we're given approximately.
That's a good question. Ten percent up for now.
Dana, did you have something?
Trying to move along here.
Yeah, okay, policy guidelines, right, right under that, there's a bullets there, it starts out, policy guidelines, pay, uh, plans and pay, grace, okay. At the end of that sentence, it says, and accuracy, so the and accuracy goes back to compliance, which doesn't make sense, so I would change it to, easier wording would be monitored to ensure accuracy and compliance with labor contracts and personnel policies, period.
I read it the right way.
Is that right? It's a suggestion, okay?
So you just wanna change the word accuracy?
He wants to move accuracy up to ensure accuracy, comma, in compliance, just so that it's clear that you're ensuring accuracy, not complying with accuracy.
Right.
Next, give me one, please.
And in that same paragraph, then the spelling of publicly, P U B, L I C, L Y, not A L Y, A, just L Y. And then, um, on, uh, page, uh, about page five, it's, uh, it's, it's section three is reserve funds and fund balances, the second paragraph begins with the word with the approval, and Board of Selectmen, uh, it should, I think it should, instead of policy guidelines, it's reserve guidelines, right? It's not clear what policy, is it the whole guidelines here or what?
How about if you say these policy, these, this policy guideline or these policy guidelines, because it's within the section.
The, the, okay.
Yeah, what's that, what's that legal reference? What's the word to reference that section ahead?
ID?
What's that?
Says set.
Yeah, I think you say that, of the, or the, for, the, for.
A four mention?
Yeah, four mention, that's what I'm thinking about.
Yeah, but we have to raise our rates if we use a.
I'm thinking that four mention might be a little.
They're not, they're not mentioning.
Read that one a thousand times, why isn't that coming? That's what I was thinking about, sorry.
I think this would be about the beginning, the top of page six.
Wait a minute, hold on, I'm, I'm not clear.
I don't think we've got the change, so we're putting cities or part of policy guidelines?
Instead of policy guidelines, we're really talking about this reserve fund, fund balances, so section three.
So policy.
Instead of this.
Policy guidelines from this section three.
Exactly, there we go.
That's right, next.
Yes, uh, the, the top of page six, I believe it's something like the G F, G F O A notes, and then it says adequate levels of fund balances, of fund balance, I think that means reserve fund balances. So I would add the word reserve, and I think you want multiple in there, balances.
Hey, let's just not guess at that, I'm not sure that it is a reserve fund, so, I mean, I mean, whoever knows what the G F O A is and says, just don't store, don't just store work in there.
We could it fund balances.
Then it's a singular, as I have in mind, so it's.
We'll do fund balances, we'll have to guess.
To mitigate.
That might be other mention.
What fund balances, okay.
It's like a little big conversation.
Under, under policy guidelines, the, uh, the second paragraph down, the town will endeavor to maintain a target free cash balance, now I can remember having good debates about this, but they haven't been at that meeting. I'm suggesting that to, to make it clear, the best way to do it is to say, the free cash balance at the close of the current fiscal year, parentheses, that is June thirtieth, uh, close parenthesis, and then go on, of three percent of the prior year's tax levy, period. Instead of trying to say after the town meeting appropriations, because it's, I guess it's a question of what represents, the real objective is that at the end of the fiscal year, to have in, in the free cash remaining, that three percent as which you shed into the new year.
This is, this is a, this is a, but you're going into an actual from a budget, it's not what, that's not what that is.
I think, I think, I think the intent is, when you're planning, you're gonna try and not have too much or too little free cash. What happens on June thirtieth, so, I don't know.
You're not talking about what that, you're not trying to, trying to guess certified free cash, you're not trying to guess what the target is. You're saying, if I start with this certified free cash number, we make all these adjustments, what's that net number at the end? You wanna make sure that what that number is.
Okay.
So basically, on the, on the, on the FinCon model, it's that starting net free cash.
It's working with hard numbers, then you're saying, you may be wrong when you get to June thirtieth, that's okay, that's okay.
That's what we're trying to do.
I got it, okay, all right. And then, uh, maybe, actually, the next sentence. And then, the, the next sentence, this is what I would have, amounts in excess of this amount may be made available and recommended, oh, for appropriation at town meeting for capital purchases at one time. I, I think, recommended for what purpose, for appropriation at town meeting. And, and then I added some other reasons for it in, because it's really a redundancy between what's in that paragraph and the paragraph that the second.